I don't know, there's a discrepancy on where their by the way is. We feel like their line is on our property. So we thought we would reach out to them and find out if they would tap the line for us a meter. Uh, we paid somewhere about three hundred and forty dollars to have that done. That was their process, their application fee. They come back and told us nine weeks later after calling them seventeen times. And that we could, they would upgrade the line for us. But it was their discretion if it was a two million dollar bill for them. We would have to pay ten percent of that upgrade. Well, at that time, we elected not to do it and we put in a well. Uh, but it, it surprises me that they're gonna be at a point where they're gonna have to upgrade. Cause there's a lot of folks that are tapping wells that are having a hard time having four, five gallons. Dishing wells that are not working for new, for new homes that are financed with a bank or something. We know some friends that are going through it out in this area.
Well, if you got your last bill, they had included in their, their rate increases.
So interesting, they're increasing.
So what is your name?
My name is Joseph Benavides.
Joseph Benavides?
Yes, ma'am.
And what on God's green earth persuaded you?
That I had a lot of issues with Crystal Clear, so I decided to do something about it.
Well, good for you.
Yes.
You're gonna tell us where you live?
In Wimberly.
I know.
But I work in Wildup County.
Okay.
And we've had to deal with Crystal Clear, they'll quote one thing and then they'll change it completely around. Uh, they'll say, hey, um, we can put it here and then the last one, oh, by the way, we need a decent. Oops, we didn't tell you that. And I know so many horror stories that they'll quote customers something. Uh, one fellow right off of twenty, he was quoted five thousand bucks to put a meter. He built his house and says, don't get us with a meter and one of them thirty-six thousand.
Ooh.
Yeah.
My problem has been, I have, one was a relative of mine, one was another friend of the family. Both elderly ladies. They threatened to come in their house when they weren't there and shut off their water if they found they even had a hose running to the property next door. Threatened them, threatened them right out, flat out, threatened them.
Yeah.
Well, they did that to one of my neighbors, uh, on one of our properties. He had a fourplex off of one meter and it was very, they just read out line period. They said, look, you can't have a fourplex off of one meter only, you need to put four meters.
Okay.
Kind of sort of fair enough, even though it's been there since the eighties. Uh, then they said, oh, by the way, our lines are tapped out. Uh, you, you, you can't put four meters and we're gonna shut you off.
We can't supply.
Yes, and that, and so they said, well, what's the solution? Oh, well, the solution is you can hire somebody to bore into the street, go all the way to one twenty-three, go under one twenty-three, tap into that line over there, you pay for everything and then once you do that, then we'll put some meters here.
Yep.
And so they wanted him to pay for their infrastructure. And they said, we're only doing this because TSEC would charge us ten thousand bucks a day if we don't do it. Well, I contacted TSEC.
Whoa, okay.
And TSEC said, no, we're not telling them that at all. And then this fellow with the property, he hired a lawyer who in turn hired one of their former engineers. And the former engineer said, they're lying, that line isn't even at sixty percent capacity. So they were just straight out line, straight out line, get somebody to get their infrastructure put in for them. So lots of cases.
Now, there's, I, I don't know, the only thing, there have been so much that is not positive. The only thing that I can say positive is that there are workers in the field have, are typically, I have not run across one that is not great. But as far as the main office and the board, yeah. Oh, no, the ones I've run into have been, have been really great. How can I help you out here?
I say.
But as far as the board and far as the main office, it has not been a positive experience for anyone that I know of.
Regina Frankie, the manager there, has instructed the employees not to talk to people about Crystal Clear. Cause I've gone to the employees, the ones that are out there on the field putting meters and so forth. And they won't talk to me, they said they have instructions not to talk to me.
Right.
That tells you a lot right there.
Yeah, yeah.
That tells you a lot.
So, yeah, in the Kingsbury area, in the Kingsbury area, we're serviced by, you know, of course, private wells, uh, Crystal Clear and then some with Springs Hill, which I think now is going to, yes, you did. Yes, Spring Hill is, is, is great. Uh, the rates are like half of what Crystal Clear is. Uh, and gone, I have gone to some board meetings at Crystal Clear and it surprises me, uh, the amount of, I think it was something like thirty percent water loss, um, in their infrastructure, so.
Losing millions of gallons.
Yes, and the amount of money that they spend on, on lawsuits. So a lot of the money that we pay into them, uh, goes towards lawsuits.
Did you see their new impact fee that they wanna get?
Yeah, yes.
Currently it's two thousand something, they wanna bump it up to five thousand one hundred and change.
Yes.
And the notices they sent out were very disingenuous. They said, it won't affect current customers.
Right.
No, it won't affect current meters. If later on you wanna get another meter put in your property, it's gonna be five thousand bucks impact fee.
Yeah.
But I protested that along with somebody else, so there's gonna be a hearing now with TSEC.
Well, if you are, uh, ready for self-sacrifice and ready to, to try and turn something positive, I'm all, I'm all for it. I, I, it sounds like you're coming from someone that's had, you know, not positive dealings with them and wants to do something positive there, then. I don't know what the residential requirements are if you live in Wimberly, if you can run for the board.
No, uh, as long as, uh, as long as I'm voted in by Crystal Clear customers, I can run for the board.
Okay.
It's not about living in, it's about getting voted by Crystal Clear customers.
Yeah.
And we have a lot of properties out here in Wildup County. And there's a reason we deal with Wildup County, not Hayes County, for example.
Yes.
Wildup County has been very, very friendly to deal with that, very good experience.
Yes.
Everything, Marshall Service, Fire Marshall, uh, Wildup Environmental, et cetera. Only Crystal Clear, six, I like a four, so.
Sorry, I have to ask one more question.
Sure.
You said we, who is we?
Oh, the life, the real boss.
Okay.
We? The boss, yeah.
Well, I, I hope that, yes, I hope that there can be some positive change because it's, there hasn't been anything positive regarding Crystal Clear for, for a long time.
Yeah, I think they definitely need some new voices.
Yeah.
So hopefully you could get in and be a good voice.
Yeah, I can see voting, actually. I mean, I never really voted, I voted once, you know, for the board. Uh, however, that most of the time, because it was someone I knew. So most of the time I don't know any of these, any of the people running. So I appreciate you showing up and, and bringing your voice and letting us know and, and I mean, you're trying to construct something positive here and.
Yes, there's another fellow that's also running, Nick Reiner, you might know him, he's from the area. Uh, but he's also on board with changing things. Uh, Donald Bosworth is another fellow running, but he's been there over ten years and he just rubber stamps up fee increases all the time, so. And both are, we always say somebody ought to do something well, sometimes that's somebody you.
Sometimes you gotta do it, sometimes, sometimes you gotta get voluntold.
We're all voluntold.
General election, Norman Pitt.
I voted today, early voting opened today.
Do you mind saying the other person's name?
General election.
It took him a ballot. It was on the ballot that I filled out today.
All right.
You said Nick Reiner?
Being picked either, neither, one or two.
He is Joseph Benavides.
So pick two, which would be me, of course, and Nick Reiner.
Nick Reiner?
Yes, Reiner, R-B-I-N. Oh, is that good or bad?
Yeah, no, there's some Reiners around, yeah, definitely.
The better one.
Be campaigning for you, say your own.
Yeah.
Big time.
Well, we're, we're trying to get more people on board that, that are changing. But right now we're starting with two, two seats, but next year, two more seats are coming up for election. And that's what we wanna do, do the change to, to. Just that, that's what it is, but, but Crystal Clear wants to go into wastewater now. And it's real simple, Crystal Clear can extort their customers, there's no other game in town.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's as simple as that.
Yeah, we're not allowed to choose.
Yes, exactly, you can't choose, uh, you know, Green Valley.
Provider, right.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we talked about the lawsuits, it's exactly the same thing. Uh, I don't know if it was Navarro Ranch, but, uh, they're getting sued because there, there was this development gonna be done and they changed the price around three times. Finally, this development company said, well, we'll go with City San Marcos, they'll give us the water, we can get City San Marcos. And Crystal Clear counters it, no, you can't do that. You have to use our water versus federal action. Now, like I said, there.
Coming across workers, I understand many of the lines in this area are used by multiple, such as San Marcos, all the way down to Victoria, performing a cancer.
Correct.
Okay, just so that I'm not off base with what I hear.
Yeah, no, no, the, the lines are totally out of it. Correct.
And that's why you would try and get a different one, but you aren't allowed to. Whereas at one time, I understand with electric power, oh, yeah, so anybody's electing funds. I said, we're a co-op, why bother me? Keep trying yourself.
Yeah.
I know in, in the, like, Nuasis County, you have, you can have your choice. You can pick from any one of three or four electric providers and you can pick from any one of three or four water suppliers. I don't know what makes the difference between Nuasis County and, you know, other counties like Guadalupe, where if you're in that service area, that's your only provider. If you're in this service area for electric, that's your only provider. I don't know what makes the difference in them, but, yeah, it's unfortunately, like you said, it's a, basically it's a monopoly in the area.
So monopolizing the necessity, that's a problem.
Yeah.
If it was phone, shoes, whatever, we just went buying, but water, you needed.
Yeah.
And it's a necessity, simple as that, true.
Yeah, well, we're, if you know anything about City of Kingsbury, we're working very hard towards, uh.
A bunch of water initiatives.
Yeah, a bunch of, several water initiative, water, water collection, everything.
We'll have a report on that later.
Yeah. So, yeah, good luck to you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Do you wanna just say your name and what you're running for again, just in case people?
Joseph Benavides, running for a Crystal Clear Specialty Utility District Board.
And you feel better, it's quite fascinating.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, any further public comments?
One question, you, you're having a festival November ninth.
Ninth.
Nine.
Yes, sir. Any further public comments? All right, we'll move on to item number three, review of public documents. Area residents who need help with ETJ annexation or other paperwork, we present it now. Um, I don't know if anybody has anything along those lines. I did receive, um, one, uh, last week that I will be turning in this week, um, to, uh, from, uh, Ingle Keys on, uh, on twenty.
EPJ release or?
EPJ release.
Okay.
I think there's some in front of Joseph back there.
Joseph, thank you.
Um, and then I have a few more that I have, I have that I need to finish, work on, pack it on and get this ready to go. Um, let's see, item number four, old business consent agenda item approval of September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular commission meeting minutes, executive session minutes approval. Anything, uh, on that consent agenda that needs to be brought onto the regular agenda? All right, endorse the stand on the consent agenda. Um, item number five, discuss and consider grant funding information, video call recap.
Okay, um, so, uh, I have Jessica and Sam and I, we're all on a phone call, uh, with.
Sam didn't make it, but.
Oh, that's true, like, that's true, he made the first one that the other person could have made, knowing he rescheduled.
Yeah.
Uh, but we had a conversation, uh, with Bonweir, uh, from Texas Water Board. Is he, he's Texas, well, uh, and a few other water people. Um, he actually had four different, uh.
Well, the woman, a woman who is, uh, helps run the grant, the, um, that we have the resolution about in our, she was in there.
She was in there too. So we had a Zoom meeting with a bunch of, um, different people from the state to talk about funding for rainwater collection. Um, you know, and.
And pass, like the emergency well, um, and.
It was a, it was a little disheartening, to be honest. Um, uh, the, the, the overall message was you gotta ask for millions of dollars or we're not gonna give you anything. Our project is too small, um, they did, but it wasn't totally disheartening. They said, uh, you know, the community well has some possibilities.
Well, I mean, he basically said that it, or she said, that, uh, um, the TDA grant can't, um, finance an emergency well, that it would have to be something that's hooked up to a whole water system, basically.
Well, that would be ideal.
Critical infrastructure.
That would be ideal, but actually, I think she said if it could be used.
Pay for the generator that could help run the well potentially. But she also said that it might just be too much rigmarole to be worth it for what we would actually get from the grant.
Yeah.
She said that, um, that other ideas that we could apply for the TDA grants, um, could include, like she was talking about, um, road, yeah, road maintenance. But my understanding is that grant works is very strongly against us doing that.
Y'all have several issues facing y'all and, and trying to get something started costs a lot of money. Uh, Water Development Board, in some ways, is gonna be your best shot at it, but most of that is not gonna be grants, it's gonna be loans.
That's what they were saying, yeah.
Y'all's, y'all's biggest issue as far as, as getting funding is that you don't have the low moderate income area is part of it. If you have a low moderate income that we can serve, then we can, and first off, first off, they look at your total city. Um, and I don't think y'all are over fifty percent and that's what you have to do to have a citywide project.
Fifty percent low to moderate.
Low to moderate, fifty-one percent, right?
Fifty-one percent, right?
Right, fifty-one percent, if you got fifty-one percent, you can do something that serves your whole city. If you don't, you have to say, okay, once we have a water line, we can go this direction because this area right here that this line serves is low moderate income. And that's, that's gonna be a problem for y'all. Y'all have so many working people here in this community, I mean, this is a working community. Um, and once they're working, they meet low moderate income in Texas pretty easily because our salaries are high enough that that happens.
In this area, definitely.
And, I mean, oh, you go, it, it's real hard. I have the Alamo area and I have, um, Victoria, the Golden Crescent. Golden Crescent hardly has any communities that meet low moderate income because of the employment along the coast. Alamo area has a few more, y'all have a few areas that you have someone who has a group of homes out here and that might be a group of low moderate income. The way our company helps, we will go knock on doors and find an area that can be served. You know, this CD grant, uh, one of the first things, and one of the reasons we wanted to get y'all signed up early, is that we want to find an area for you to serve. Next part that you mentioned is about the roads. With the roads, it, it is, if you were in Golden Crescent, they, that region put that as a number one. They can go build a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar road to serve low moderate income in Golden Crescent. Y'all can't do it in Alamo area because the region did not put roads as a priority.
I mean, the TDA lady, you know, she, she knows who we are and where we are and, and she was like, we're not gonna be paying for your emergency well, but, you know, I still encourage you to apply maybe for road maintenance or something.
Well, they also said we could do.
It's not something that we've been looking into.
And it's a region by region thing.
Well, they, they also said if we ask for a bunch more money, we might be able to get a grant to do the community well tied into its downtown. But that would be, I mean, a whole big thing and that's not what we were, I mean, yeah, that would be up to the community, I think that's, I don't know.
Yeah, it's kind of a whole different can of worms.
That's a whole different thing.
Yeah, in talking with other cities, uh, that have water, uh, as part of their services, it's, it's like a can of worms that you just do not want to open. It's a, it's a, it's, I mean, it certainly.
To put in all the piping and stuff, it would be a whole thing.
Administration of the whole thing, billing, you know.
But, well, I did wanna say.
Yeah, installation, yeah.
I mean, one thing we did learn from, from those guys, they gave other examples of cities who are trying to do rainwater collection and, Bastrop? No, wait, Bandera.
Yes, really.
I have it in my notes, by the way.
Yeah, they're trying to do.
They are trying to do a city rainwater collection initiative and so I think.
Like to do rebates and stuff for, for individuals to build it at their place. Apparently they've got something going now.
Have you heard anything about it? All right.
So it might be worth talking to them and.
Yeah, we'd be great to talk to them.
What are they rebating and how are they rebating?
We don't know, we haven't talked to them, but I assume it's like people put in their own system.
The one big thing that's working for Bandera, they're a much larger population, they also have an infrastructure.
They're rebating against their current water bill?
I'm sorry?
They're rebating against their current water bill?
I don't know what they're rebating.
Yeah, we have to meet with.
What you're saying is from, from a structural perspective, they've gotten more, they've got more flexibility to do, and, and resources you put more with rainwater collection. I mean, you know.
It's worth meeting with them.
If Joseph gets elected, then we could partner with Crystal Clear and figure out rainwater collection and use existing pipes to, to pump it.
Yeah.
Saying.
I mean, that was one thing that they said at the meeting, was if we were partnering with Crystal Clear, that, uh, we could probably find some money that way.
And to be honest, um.
We're not really wanting to do that right now.
And at that meeting, at that meeting, I did, I did say, I mean, I had to say at that meeting to all the Texas people, the water board people, I was like, I hear nothing, I don't have Crystal Clear, I have a well, thank goodness. Uh, but I, we only hear complaints, we only hear complaints about Crystal Clear here at City Commission. So I said that and I'm, I'm nervous about working with them, so that we, I don't know.
Well, Joseph's gonna fix them.
Yes. That won't work with you.
He's, he's gonna need a little help now then and we'll do what we can.
Yes.
Thank you too. Um. So, so just to go back, there was overall, Kingsbury is not eligible for either five, Agenda Item five or six due to low moderate income?
Well, the five was about six, so, yeah, but you, you're the expert.
And, and that's what I'll say, we, we want to get this, there's, there's two phases in this. First off, y'all haven't ever gotten grants before, so y'all are gonna score real high. The second part will be getting a winning application. To get a winning application, we have to have a good project and it has to serve a low moderate income over fifty-one percent. So there's gonna be two parts to it. Um, after we even get y'all in scoring, we think because y'all hadn't gotten one for the general score well. And the first part, the phase two, the phase two is where we have to come in and start working. We're gonna start with y'all as quickly as possible. Now, the first phase is not even due till December first. After that, the state will score it. While they're scoring it, because we think that y'all will, will be the top group, we are, we will start working on your project. And what that's gonna involve, that's gonna involve me coming in, sitting down with y'all and saying, you know, these are the things you can do and it's on our resolution tonight that y'all realize that this is what the state priorities are and this is what the regional priorities are and you want to apply and you know if you do get the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, that, that you are gonna have to pay and I think y'all's part is.
Fifteen K, I think.
Is it fifteen thousand or is it?
I think that's what's on the resolution.
It, it depends if you're five percent or two percent on it, um, which is payable over two or three different fiscal years depending on when it funded.
Well, there's big difference in two and five percent over seventy-five, seven hundred and fifty thousand. What is, what is, what are we looking at?
I mean, the resolution says we would be committing to fifteen K.
But it doesn't say what the maximum amount of the grant would be?
The maximum amount of the grant, I believe, is seven hundred and fifty.
Is it fifteen thousand based on seven hundred and fifty?
Right, that's two, that's a two percent match. So if you got five hundred thousand, it would be ten, so it, it just depends on.
If we got five hundred thousand, it would be ten?
Ten thousand.
Ten K instead of fifteen.
It'd be still two percent.
Two percent.
Or five percent, it's still.
All right.
Yeah. So does the low, does the low to moderate, uh.
Threshold.
Income.
What is moderate?
Yeah, threshold, is that for just the TDA grant or is that for the majority of grants?
Most grants consider it some out unless it is a, an emergency or GLO, that's called MIT, uh, mitigation modification, they call MIT mod. And what that has to do is, and I don't know what kind of flooding y'all have, I think we talked about this, y'all are higher here than just about anywhere else.
Yeah, we're the highest point between Central and.
So, so.
Although there's low water crossings everywhere.
But anytime there's dips, uh, and I, and I did talk to y'all, cause I've talked about, um, down, down the highway a little bit, that, um, what's the little town there that has the?
Lulule.
It?
Lulule?
Mysterio.
No, the, the little.
Which direction?
It's down, it's down, um, the highway towards, it's past Lulule, um, I'm gonna link.
Harwood.
It's past.
Welder, Flatonia.
It's, no, it's on this, it's this side of Flatonia, it's on the other side of it.
Okay.
It's on this side of the road, I'm just gonna blank on it. Uh, we'll, we, they have a meatpacking plant.
Welder.
Welder.
Welder, Welder. Welder has this issue where they have all their streets run at angles and stuff and, and they're higher, but they have a lot of flooding that, that ruins their streets. So they're real concerned about, um, flooding in, in there and they need to get stuff fixed. So they have drainage issues that we can use grant funds on. Y'all don't seem to have that as much, uh, it's more gradual slopes than the hills. But we will, we want to find some way that y'all can get this money that really helps you. If it came down to the point that we say that even if you got seven hundred and fifty thousand, that there's not anything that this money is gonna help you with, we will, we'll tell you, we're not gonna let you throw away fifteen thousand dollars. I mean, we're not just gonna spend the money for the heck of it. But what we do, once you're our clients, we are gonna be looking at every possible way we can, can help you because there are other things that come up. Um, the Texas Water Development Board, while it is something that you do have to, to get as a loan, some of that loan can be forgivable depending on what you use it, which almost makes it a grant, it's just the way that they do administration. We also, while we're, we're looking at that, there's other things that we will try to help you with. We will try to help you with, um, getting money for generators. If y'all have issues even for fire departments and stuff like that, we, we will be looking at different ways that we can help.
Ken, what is the low to moderate income level?
The rate?
Yeah. What are we talking about?
Income.
Income.
It's income and I, and I can't tell you, I mean, they, it's a, um, number that was, that came, that they came up with for each region and.
Oh, low to mod, it depends on the region you live in?
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's, it's like you're, you're not gonna be matching up with someone that has higher.
Hey, Tim, could you introduce yourself just cause people are wondering?
I, I'm Tim Weatherby with Grant Works.
All right, and Grant Works, Grant Works is an organization we've been talking about, uh, working with to, uh, apply for some grants potentially.
I just kinda had a question, it seems like we just don't fit this HUD grant, so I'm wondering where, if you have any ideas.
Yeah, I'm concerned about it.
Yeah.
It, it's going, I had several counties in Golden Crescent who would score real well and this time they didn't apply. Alamo area has a lot of counties that aren't applying for it and, and that kind of, Guadalupe County would score real well, as far as I know, they didn't apply for it. Now, one of the reasons I'm, I'm kinda disappointed in that and I, I haven't heard if they are or not, but they can use their money to help, now, y'all are no longer, I mean, a community, now y'all are a, a city wants to, to the corporation part. And I did get to work with the other newest city in Texas after, the week after y'all. Um, it is, there is money available, there are people that can get it, but the projects are limited and y'all are gonna be one of those communities that, since you don't have an existing infrastructure that needs to either be expanded or repaired, we're gonna have to figure out something that helps this community out.
We're very, but, you know, part of it is we're a very self-sufficient group of people in our area. And, but, you know, as the city commission, we don't wanna pass up any opportunities to provide something. And, but, you know, as the City Commission, we don't wanna pass up any opportunities to provide something great, you know, for the community. That, you know, we had a like, wow, that's a great, let's do that. You know, everybody's like, yeah, let's do that. So it's not that we have something special that is a real need because again, we're a very self-sufficient group of people. So it's, but I don't wanna pass that opportunity up to do something.
That kind of is getting to where I'm thinking. I don't, I'm not comfortable going searching for money and trying to figure out where to spend it.
I mean, we do have projects, but they're not, it's not gonna be funded by this money, so I'm kinda thinking-
Fully developed, at least in our head, need and a project that would be, fit all our criteria. Being beneficial to the people that live out here and be something that would be useful and something that can be done. And then look for some money sources if we need that.
Yeah, we certainly don't want to like try to go for something just because.
Yeah, or also that's gonna get us obligated to do something that's gonna be a whole bunch more money that people don't want.
Are any of the grants in question, or monies in question that you're talking about can be geared towards any kind of business development?
We, there are economic development, which is also something, one of the things we're really looking at for y'all.
I think about in terms of, you know, the general store now being open, but a gas station or something. I don't know, obviously 10 years ago, that might have been something.
This particular grant has certain things that can be spent on. There are lots of other ones that we look at. And that's, that's one of the big things that, what, we're really a senior community for lots of reasons. So we like to expand our business, but we handle 40% of the grants in Texas already and maybe 50% this year. And there's like 20 or 30 companies and we're the one that does almost half of it. So we like to grow, but we grow because we're good at what we do, because we provide service. Y'all are interesting to us, especially to me, because y'all are a new city that is looking at doing things that haven't been done here before. Yeah, I've lived in a community that was unincorporated. In fact, I do right now. Live in Vanderbilt is my home right now. We are not an incorporated-
That's up near Lost Maple?
I'm sorry?
Is that up near Lost Maple?
Vanderbilt is down by, south of Edna and Victoria.
Okay.
And I'm in the process of moving over north of Victoria now, but right now I live in an unincorporated community. Because of that, one of the advantages is that the county can come in and provide it as part of their grant. For y'all, I would encourage you to go through the process because it's kind of a squeaky wheel thing. If nobody ever hears of y'all applying for anything, and the first time that y'all need something, y'all go and apply, you're not, they're not gonna know who you are as much. It's better to go ahead and apply and start working on something. This is not, that's the way the state made it this time. It is a two-phase project. At first, they want people to see if anybody, see who should be applying. And then they want you to come up with a project specific-
That meets their criteria.
That meets their criteria. So it's a two-step process. In the old days, I would come to y'all and say, y'all don't apply. But the new way they're doing it is since they're doing it in two phases, they want to hear who is out there, who is interested, and then they want you to come up with a project. And if you don't come up with a project, then it didn't cost y'all anything. I mean, it may cost us a lot of money, but we're willing to do it.
You say it didn't cost us anything?
It cost you the cost of newspaper ads for-
Okay, not, not monetary cost. Who it costs us in being considered again?
Oh, no, no. It's better to get your name out there that y'all have been doing things. That's what I'm saying.
One type of cost. There's so much more to it.
You know, the Water Development Board probably didn't know who y'all were until, unless they've had complaints. We share a lot of areas of states that they're-
Jim, I don't, that seems to be counter to the old, and you say they're changing, but the old way of it was you scored higher if they'd never heard of you, you'd never apply. Now, are you saying, because that's what I-
Well, there's, there's two parts. And what you're saying is, is if you've applied and you haven't won, that's good.
Okay.
So that's good.
Totally if you've applied and you did get, then you're scored.
Exactly. So this time, y'all could apply, or y'all, y'all go ahead and do this first part because we're here. And then we come up with a good application, or we don't. If there's not a good project, then we say, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna look at other things that we might do.
We're not gonna expect you to dump money on us when we don't know what we want.
They're not going to.
They're not. You have to have a good-
They're dumping that on you.
But sort of look for money and then try to find a project to spend on it.
Yeah, it's still very much a horse before the cart.
Yep.
To me, it is.
Yep.
I said it from the beginning.
Yeah. If we have a project that we are sincere and enthusiastic about, we take it to them and if it doesn't rub off on them, then we'll just find it somewhere else and we'll come back to them next year.
Well, and if they had been able to fund the emergency well, that's something that we all agreed about, but, but they can't, so I don't know.
No, they can. It's not, there isn't anything.
Right.
You know?
Well, yeah. It doesn't fit with the grant.
We're not, we're not a dense, big dense population area.
Yeah.
Or not a lot of people that are in great need.
So do we want to, so does that kind of everything we have in the recap of that, or is there an action item we do wanna take from this?
Well, I mean, the next agenda item is the resolution. So, uh, do, I, I, I think the only action we need is to decide whether or not this resolution really, I think. I mean, what do you, I don't know. You know, I mean, what?
What are, this phrase is out on the under, first priority project?
From the COG.
And where do we find the list of what their first priority project?
Y'all should have got, y'all should have a copy of that.
Well, I mean, it's basically water and wastewater, right?
Well, your area does water, wastewater, and their fire department buildings may have been on that list. Y'all obviously don't need that. Y'all got one of the nicer ones.
I don't believe it was.
But there are, for your region, and I don't have it on top of my head.
It's gonna be with the Alamo COG.
Alamo area.
Well, I have been a little bit, and it's really hard to find things online about what the Alamo COG decided. I, I, I dare you, find it.
I told you. My father told you.
But, but I mean, what I've been basically hearing from Grant Works is that we needed to choose a water wastewater project, but our water project isn't-
What I would recommend, and this is definitely gonna be up y'all, I would say do the resolution. We will get our staff involved. We will work as hard as we can with y'all, y'all telling us what y'all want. And look and see if there's something that fits.
I don't know what we want. I don't feel like I know what we want.
I, yeah, I mean-
I agree.
I would, I would, I would be open to looking to see what's available and see if there's something there that-
We could spend the money.
Flugs my boat.
Well, okay. I understand, but I would, I just, I want-
I just don't wanna get ourselves in a situation where we have a bunch of money that we now have to spend on a project that is like building a homeless shelter in Little Kingsbury or some, I mean, who knows? Something that's not necessary.
At what point are we obligating ourselves, the city, violate financially to a project that may or may not succeed or may or may not be what the community wants? And how, how is that going to support the principle of the liberty city?
It won't.
Well, yeah, but he's saying that we don't have to.
Yeah, because this is, the first part is to be, to do research, which we haven't done. We, this is a phase one project. The way the state set it up was to make it easier on them. Used to, everybody would have these big detailed projects and spend a lot of money on them, and then they would go compete. And the state would have to go through, you know, several hundred of these projects and study them and say, this one's good, this one's good, this one's good, and this one's not, or whatever. And now what they wanna do is say, these are communities that are eligible. So that's what the first part is, is to see if you're even an eligible community. So the next part is to go in and do an application. And that is the next part where y'all can say, no, we do not even wanna send an application in. At that point, after you've done the research and you don't wanna do an application, you don't do an application, you don't spend any money. We'll have done, we'll have done a lot of work for you for free and we don't care. We wanna help y'all.
Y'all don't start billing until the grant has been received.
We don't beat a dollar unless y'all actually turn the application in and win the application.
Not the, not phase one, but phase two, right?
We're not under any obligation to turn in an application. We're not under any obligation to fulfill any of your wishes.
We want to help y'all. We think we're interested.
But we can take the first step.
Then, I mean, yeah, I guess, I mean, then I would, I would be down with approving a resolution as well, but I think that the, the project, no matter, I don't want just $750,000 to do something that this community doesn't want. And, you know, so we need to come up with a project that's actually necessary.
Would be to submit the application, and we won't do that until-
January?
And oh, no, no, that can be done until like next April or May. Because first, in December, when we turn this in, and they've moved the deadline a little bit because it's the weekend after Thanksgiving, or the weekend after Thanksgiving, and that kinda messed things up. So they're doing it the next week. They will look at everybody. They will score and they'll say, okay, y'all are eligible. We will, before they even do that, we're already gonna start talking to y'all. And I mean, I may come have lunch with y'all and say, you know, what is this? Or have a work session or something like that so y'all can all get together. And we can talk about the area. Y'all can drive us around. And I don't know who all would come. And we could say, let's look at this, if it's something you wanna do. And y'all can tell me then, we don't wanna do it. And at that point, we're obviously not gonna waste our time either.
But if, if in the next two, three months, if we come up, wow, that is, that would be a great project. That is something, we wouldn't even have that opportunity.
That would be amazing.
Well, that would be amazing. But we won't have the opportunity to do anything about it unless we do the first part.
Yeah, man, if we waited another year to act on it, would it be a terrible, terrible thing?
No.
No. But let me just, while we've got more people here than usual, let me just ask, whether you live in this community or not, or if you're related to it, or you have a similar, if we had $500,000 to do some kind of improvement to this, where we live here, what would it be? Yes, sir?
My, my comment would be, hearing you discuss this tonight, is that if you would find out if you were an eligible city, whether or not it's specific to this grant or any other grant, because I think what not only attracted us about the Kingsbury community for our property, but was, even though we are out of the city limits, is that you've also got something going for you. When we tell people we're from Kingsbury, they go, man, you've even got an exit of the interstate. So you're being able to expand your city and make it more than what it was yesterday. To have that, and when you talk about business development-
We have two.
Eligibility for the city, I think is huge, in my view.
You wanna expand the city in what ways?
Well, for business development, to really understand, you know, it's like the general store. Anything that's going on like that to keep people from driving to Sagan or Luling.
Why?
You know, that's what, you don't wanna be known as, you gotta go there to do this. You can do it here in Kingsbury.
Why, why did you want that? I've just-
For one, convenience. Cost on families now to drive four miles versus 18 miles is huge. When you do it every day or three times a week. We don't have children at home, but we go to the store quite often. And the general store here in town has really been a big deal because of the selections that they have.
I know.
We already drive a long ways to work.
I know. Another question then, why did, why did you choose to live out here instead of where you work or where the store is?
We didn't wanna be in an HOA anymore.
Yay, I hear that.
And that's the word that you buy the-
Freedom.
And I wanna make sure that this city doesn't turn into illegal HOA either, you know?
That's why we're so adamant about, you know, so we film everything. We want participation. We are all volunteer. You know, we're here to, to ensure that we all have our freedoms, that we have low to no regulation, minimal governing, you know, we don't-
Low regulation, low taxation.
Yeah.
Out of, I want this city out of my business as much as possible and yours too.
But also, we can do things like the grants to help the community and maybe, and maybe that grant goes to, if it does do streets, railway streets could use a-
See, I was wondering about the streets. I have given grant to streets because I live downtown Kingsbury. I live on 4th and Summit Street.
All those streets down there need some help.
People speeding. We have people where shouldn't stop signs don't have stop signs. The stop sign is not gonna stop somebody from speeding anyway. They practically go into our ditch just to make a turn, you know, and it's, it's getting more dangerous for anybody that lives in that portion.
A year or two ago, I believe, we talked about stop signs, but most people weren't interested in-
Yeah, because like I said, the stop sign is not gonna stop somebody.
No, it's not.
You're gonna need speed bumps or caution lights or something that's gonna grab somebody's attention. Because a stop sign, nobody pays attention to those. And I mean, you're right there. I mean, like I said, I live right on the corner, so I see people, you know. And then if you actually look on maps, where I live, the map actually will tell you to just keep going through my brother-in-law's car, like, just don't go there. And there's not a-
It's a paper sign there.
Yeah, it's not an intersection. So I mean, if somebody's looking at their maps and not really paying attention.
They do it all the time. They go down Railway Street and end up at the cattle gate because the map tells them that there's a road.
Well, this is actually fantastic to hear because I think, you know, we have possibly a roads project, you know, whether we can get it with the grant or whatever.
Because I mean, it's all of those roads right there.
Those roads right there are in terrible condition.
The one, I think, what is it, Guadalupe, that goes across, that one has that dip.
Guadalupe and Summit both have paper ends.
Okay, they do. But Guadalupe has that, that dip. And I mean, I've seen, I don't know how many Amazon vehicles, FedEx, buses, cars fly through there not knowing that that dip's there. And I mean, just bottom out.
Yeah.
And that's dangerous because, you know, the lady that lives on that corner, she has grandchildren, you know, and I mean, you know, everybody around here has kids that-
Well, we have, we have money in the budget for signage. I don't think we need grant money, you know, for that. I mean, it's certainly-
Because I mean, I don't know, would y'all have money in budget for speed bumps?
That's what I was just wondering, would you think your neighbors would be okay with the speed bumps?
I have speed bumps out where I am and I avoid them at all costs. It really-
Not bumps, those are, get your attention.
Well, we have rumble, we have the rumble strips on Gander Slough at the some of the turns to wake you up, say, oh, the turn is coming, even though the big arrows say turn. Because people still go through those. The rumble strips helped, I guess, a bit. It seems less people go through the signs.
I know what you're talking about.
And they're, they're not terrible.
I don't really prefer the rumble strips. Those things are pain, but I mean, a speed bump or one or two is not-
The speed bump is-
Well, that's not-
Slow down.
They're really gonna have to slow down the rumble. I mean, you hit a rumble, it's over.
I think we have to, yeah, I don't think we need grant money for that. But definitely, you know, it's something that we could, you know, consider at some point. Do we want to then move off of item number five or are we?
Want them here.
Mayor, before you do, I have a, I know, I think we're addressing, I understand we're addressing the community development block grant. But when we started talking, and I guess this is a question for Tim, when we started talking, I thought we were looking at, and there are impediments to this community block grant. But we were also looking at another grant from the Texas Department that has, for brand-new cities to go out and get up to 250,000 simply for engineering, to study the topography and-
to study the topography, and anticipate design issues for drainage, and perhaps streets. Are we, is that
There's, 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 there's two parts. And I, and I, and I'll have to check the list for Alamo area, which may go into CD also. It's, it's for planning. And that was what I would, one of the things that I was just going to bring up, is that you have the option of getting an actual grant for planning. And what it does, it prepares you for emergencies as much as anything. It will say
Is this the mitigation grant through GLO?
That, there's, there's two parts. There's one that's the RCP, which y'all have already gotten in our, our proposals on that one. And I was expecting that to be on the agenda tonight. That was one of the things that had, had been talked about. So I don't know if you had gotten all the information yet on it, but it is for planning. But also, one of the things that we can look at is planning for this. What does planning do? Planning, if you have a, a city plan in place, it allows y'all to qualify for some other types of funding. That's one of the main reasons to do it. The other part is for emergencies. We have, y'all have not had the issues because y'all don't have the flooding that some of your other neighbors have. But when you have emergencies, they've talked about not allowing communities to participate because they didn't have a plan in place. So we are trying to get everyone to do a plan.
It also seems to me that if you, if we had a plan like that, it's going to feed into, number one, we're going to have engineers that are going to study the whole area. They're going to identify areas, like you're talking about in Welder, that, well, there is a problem here, where it feeds, water goes under the, on these streets out here in Guadalupe and the others that you mentioned about. It will identify those areas such that our engineers then can say on an application for a block grant, they do have a problem here that meets your specifications.
That's exactly right. We, we got our own planning department together 25 years ago. We kind of got ahead of the curve. Again, because y'all are new, y'all are a very different animal than everybody else. With other communities, we will be looking at, we take an inventory of every street. We say, this street has this, and this, and this is something, and it gives you a schedule for maintenance. Y'all may not have the same kind of need, and your plan would not be as big. Now, one of the things about the RCP plan is that there is no match involved in it at all.
I think you need a RCP.
Well, so, the one thing that had concerned me about the RCP grant, the mitigation grant through GLO, is that you, we are required to have zoning ordinance.
Y'all don't, y'all don't have zoning at all.
Right, we don't. And, I mean, it has been something that we've been discussing, but I, I had a conversation with a guy, Carlos at Grant Works, and he was telling me that if we, that if we, if and when, if or when we decide to enforce a zoning code of some kind, we will need to send a letter to every person in the, the city limits and tell, and that it's a very big scary, lots of bold print, these are your rights being taken away type of letter. And so, you know, and then if we are not able to get a zoning ordinance put in place by a certain date in the process of fulfilling the grant, that we will then be told that we, we didn't meet the, the specifications of the grant, and thus, we don't get that money, but then we still owe Grant Works for the, the work that you've done up to that point.
We wouldn't even get started until it gets approved. I mean, we've got
Well, that's what the president of planning told me, Carlos.
We, we have got, right now, we're waiting on about 30 or 40 approvals, and we're not going to do that until we, we get, I mean, our
Can't we apply for one and say, we don't have zoning right now, but we are discussing and planning to implement some kind of limited plan? Doesn't that get us in the door?
I, I think that you would have to have something, and I, and I, and Carlos may have told you, Carlos knows more than I do. So Carlos said that, that's what he, I'm just not sure that's, that's what he meant. I, I didn't get the conversation. They have gotten where they can come up with a real minimal kind of zoning, that's from what I understood. But I think that I would stay with the Community Development Block Grant first, and see if we can do planning, and what you're going to get is, is our, our company doing work for y'all for free, and then saying, this is what we think can happen. You're not going to see anybody tighter than I am. When I was county commissioner, I voted against taxes seven times in eight years. And I was, I was outvoted every time, but as the only one that did it. I would not even tell y'all to consider this. I, I'm really, I've said several times, I'm interested in y'all. I, I have to have a party to run for anything, but I'm a libertarian. I think what y'all are doing is wonderful. Considering zoning is almost completely against what y'all have done, and I can understand that. This part about doing the resolution, if, I want to see if there is any way we can help y'all. Any way that we can get any planning involved. And if we can't, then y'all didn't lose any money.
You're talking about planning money under the TDA.
Under, no, yeah, I'm talking about first, just, first, I'm talking about doing the resolution. Let us try to help you. If there is a plan that, that we can do with bringing in all the engineering and all of that part, we got it in-house. We do that, we do the whole thing. We have the civil engineers and the people who do city planning. We have several certified city planners on our staff. And they come up with ways to, to get how you need to manage the city day-to-day and long-term, and what do you want to do? What do you, you know, what is available? And on the other side of it, how can we stay the same? Because, you know, what, how y'all were formed was to keep other people out of here. As a county commissioner, you know, I can see kind of both sides of that, because I was providing services to a community like y'all, several communities like y'all. But the ones that were incorporated had, had different needs and had different ways of doing things. And everybody is different. So if y'all pass the resolution, all I can say is not going to cost y'all anything, and we want to help y'all.
So are we, are we on to item?
We're being moved to that, yes.
Yes, we're, we're working our way
Shall we read it then?
Yeah, you want to read this resolution for item six. City of Kingsbury, Texas, a resolution of the City Commission of Kingsbury, Texas, authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Community Development Fund. Whereas, the City Commission of the City of Kingsbury desires to develop a viable community, including decent housing and a sustainable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities, principally for persons of low to moderate income. And, whereas it is necessary and in the best interest of the City of Kingsbury to apply for funding under the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the City Commission of the City of Kingsbury, Texas, as followed. Number one, that a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Application for the Community Development Fund is hereby authorized to be filed on behalf of the city with the Texas Department of Agriculture, and to be placed in competition for funding under the Community Development Fund. Two, that the City of Kingsbury commits to dedicating no less than 51% of the grant funds for activities identified by the state planning region as a first priority project. Three, that all funds will be used in accordance with all applicable federal, state, local, and programmatic requirements, including but not limited to procurement, environmental review, labor standards, real property acquisition, and civil rights requirements. Four, that the City of Kingsbury is committed to providing 15,000 in matching funds toward the application's activities with the specific usage and funding source to be determined prior to any award of grant funding. Passed, approved, and adopted on this 21st day of October, 2024. I had some weird feelings about this first whereas statement. The City Commission of the City of Kingsbury desires to develop a viable community, including decent housing and a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities, principally for persons of low to moderate income. You know, it seems like the conversations we've had about the Liberty City concept, I, it sounds like we're saying here that the city is going to provide decent housing and suitable living environment, and expand the economic opportunities. While all of those things are great things, I think there might be some disagreement about whether or not that is the mission of the city government.
So is that clause part of, like a required whereas in there?
It's wording that I got from Grant Works, and I, I wrote back to the woman who is in charge of our application project, process. And I, and I pointed out this line, and I said, this feels a little out of keeping with what we're trying to do here, and what if, I proposed slightly different wording, or, I mean, different wording. And she, she called me back, and she said that she had run it up to her boss and the director or something, and that he had said that this is wording that they got directly from TDA, and it's because
It's because it's a federal grant. That's the way, that's the way the wording of the federal stuff is. It's because it's from the federal government, and they just try to match what, what the Community Development Block Grants are.
It's a wide
We can see everyone
Everybody's in it.
Department of Agriculture and the Department of Commerce and the others. They don't, they don't do any of these grants unless it's got an impact on low to moderate income. So if you're going to play the game, you have to say what they're saying there. Because otherwise, you will not be considered.
In doing so, you're doing well. You don't have to, but in doing so, you're doing well.
I would consider voting on it as long as, you know, the plan actually makes sense to the people of Kingsbury, and, you know, and to all of us, and that we're not doing undue excess work to create something that's unnecessary. Just because this is a potential, and we won't owe anything for it to you guys unless we agree to go ahead with a proposal. So if that's the wording they need, I, I'm fine with it. Hesitant, but fine with it.
My two cents now, but unfortunately, I'm only one of three votes, so I'm outnumbered. If, if it goes that way. But, I know.
I mean, I have to ask you too.
I just have to express my opinion, because I'm not comfortable saying that we desire to develop a viable community. It's fine. I would like to have this be a viable, living community of people. But I don't, I don't want to limit it to principally for persons to low and moderate income. I want, I need everybody. I don't care if the man has a million dollars, or he only has a nickel. I want to give them both the same opportunity that I can afford to do, you know, equally. So, you know, if that was the clause, that statement in this, I'm, I'll be voting nother. I'm not going to vote for the resolution.
Well, I think that the, the clause is, like, like you're saying, it's part of the federally required
I don't want to play the game. I don't want to play the game.
You're not going to play that game.
I'm not going to play the game. This is, this is what I feel, and that's, yeah. I don't, mm-mm. No, I didn't come here for the money, I came here for the, the principle, what we're doing. That's okay. Not angry, just principles.
Yeah.
I know that.
I, I, I mean, I am also leaning the same way, but I feel like there is, there are needs. There's railway road, or there's the whole back neighborhood there that has a lot of needs. And that's all ours, we all own all those roads. So I know you say maybe you can't do roads, but let's propose some roads. And maybe we can, I, I don't think we should stray from what the projects we've identified, you know, and maybe add other ones on, because to me, the downtown Kingsbury area is full of potholes. And if people living on it would like us to do something about that, then that's, yeah. I'm, I'm willing to try.
All right.
With misgivings for my libertarian values, I will make a motion to
Well, I think, I got two more, two more, I think, one more. The number two, Kingsbury commits to dedicating for funds for activities that are identified as a first priority project. Does that obligate us to? I can see dedicating funds to first priority project, but it's, I know, it's another semantic thing.
What that is saying is that y'all are going to go, when we get through the first part, that y'all say that we're, that y'all are going to go for a priority one project in your region and in the state, which everyone does, or they don't have a chance to win. If they go for a priority three project, everybody else wants a priority one, they're not going to get scored very high. So that's the reason why it's priority one.
Okay.
And, and on the roads, and that is something that y'all do need to know. Alamo area did not include roads this time. In two years, they may start. Now, so that means that, and I'm talking to lots of the counties in different areas, who, the best way to serve low, moderate income is with the new road. I mean, that's, when they say roads, they want you to come in and do a road and build it so many, you know, whatever that road is to serve. The good part about that is you don't have to maintain that road. It doesn't cost you as much to take care of, because you have one good road. Wherever you put it, you've got one good road. So, you know, maybe two years down the road, you get another one or something like that. But it's, it's a way to build up, you know, this is, this town, you're hoping is going to be around long after y'all are gone, and you want it, y'all want it to keep the same as much as possible, but y'all also want it to be here and be as cheap to take care of as possible, too.
Okay, all right, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Application to the Texas Department of Agriculture.
All right, is there a second to that motion? I can put in a second. We're, we're a committee of three here. So, and a motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's, one, one motion. All right.
Kim, one more.
Yes, sir.
Since, since y'all did vote on it, and
We will vote.
We'll vote on it. I would like to get with y'all to talk about things, and I don't know if y'all want to do a work meeting, maybe or city council meetings, or, I, I don't know what y'all do at lunch. I'm over in this area all the time, and I'm only an hour and a half from my house, so whenever.
We're a minute and a half from our house. Yeah, we can, we can usually work in a workshop, you know.
Maybe we have to, she was a commissioner or something.
What's going to happen?
I mean, if it's, if it's, since we're a commission of three, if two I mean, if it's, if it's, since we're a commission of three, if two show up, we have to post notice.
That's what I'm saying. It's nearly impossible for us to do a meeting.
Right. But that's okay. We do that. We do that quite often.
We set three days out, we can post the notice.
Sure.
Okay. It's a special meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, if you, if you want to meet with one person or the other, we, you can meet at any time.
Unless we're walking around.
If you want to meet with at least two of us, yeah, we have to post notice in three days, or a 72-hour notice.
Okay.
But we're, we're usually good with that at any time.
We're supposed to livestream any meeting with the quorum as well.
It's what?
We're also supposed to livestream any meeting with the quorum.
Yeah. As part of the Texas Government-- A, A, something.
What did it say?
I'm sorry. I forgot what that first aid-- Accountability. Texas Government Accountability Association. In order to be transparent, we, we try to make sure that we--
But everything--
Yeah.
Which I have--
If it's something like this, inviting community members is probably a good idea.
Yeah, workshops are, are open.
Okay.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Any more discussion? All those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Opposed, no.
Okay. That motion carries. All right. Item number seven, discuss and consider special event application for road closure for Gold Fest.
You had to work for it, didn't you?
Yeah.
I'm going towards Kerrville tonight.
Oh, my goodness. Will you be there?
Thanks for participating in our long discussion.
Yeah. So this is a road closure. This one's for Saturday, the 26th, from four to seven in the evening, so it's requesting a, a road closure for that, for the safety of the attendees. I'm not sure what we want to cover. I'm not sure, there is no, on here, there is no, oh, let me have a, see, hold on a second. Do I have anything on here? Do we have anything on here regarding insurance? Okay. I, before we do this, let me do, I talked with Chase Patton with TML IRP, Texas Municipal League, Intergovernmental Risk School, and regarding insurance for--
Fall harvest?
Fall harvest, any kind of, any kind of event. So, regarding, you know, gathering. So, the general liability that we have under with TML IRP would cover any of these events. The exception, and you could certainly provide for the exceptions, for an additional cost would be something with attendance over 5,000. If you have, like, bouncy houses or mechanical rides. So if we really wanted to do that, we could, with an extra cost, get, get the coverage for something like that.
The horses are okay, though?
They're not mechanical.
They're not mechanical. Yeah.
Can't pull them up.
Yeah.
Can't inflate them.
They will run over people, but, yeah. There could be a claim filed against the city, which of course our insurance would cover, but only if there was some negligence on the city's part. So if there's a big unfilled pothole in the middle and people fall into it and a broken leg or something, or if there was, you know, like you gave, like a wet floor and you didn't put out signs that caution wet floor, you know, if there was some negligence on our part, then that there would be, could be a claim, but again, our, our insurance would cover that. And the city can write up a contract with an organization saying that they're responsible, you know, for any--
Missed it.
Missout on that one. So it was pretty, and then I did call him back with another question, and, but I was on the phone when he, when he called back, but it was kind of a small question. So that's essentially it, that, yeah, our, our, our general liability does cover these events. So, that being said, so, yes, Gold Fest, not expecting over 5,000.
I just have a few questions, because I don't really remember what specifies on our permit, but where the street, where's the street going to be closed?
Yeah, it, we don't have, yeah, it doesn't specify on the permit, but it would essentially be--
From Kingsbury Street?
No, not all the way down there.
Before, after the store?
Like about the tree to--
Sorry?
To the end of--
To Marshalls or something.
Yeah, down to maybe Marshalls or--
Are they okay with the road being closed in front of their place?
I mean, the last time--
Yeah, it is a fair question. I mean, they can cert, anybody can certainly still get to that over there for those three hours. Yeah, we're looking at a road closure, just for, and we did, I think, even with one of our other permiters--
I'm so excited that there's still Halloween!
--we did discuss, you know, between closing part of it and leaving, like, outside a building. But, you know, there is a concern about people, like--
I'd rather close completely at the ends--
I agree.
But I don't, I don't, like I said, I'm not comfortable in front of a open business to block the whole front of their store--
Right.
--without their-- Now, on mine, the event, I went and spoke to the manager of Big Easy, and she was kind of hesitant on me doing a full road closure, because I had told her I wanted to, you know, break the, where the stop sign is in front of the store, all the way to where the y'all supposedly for the Fall Festival. Well, when I spoke to her today, she was kind of iffy, because she says Thursday is their karaoke night. So I told her I would, I would keep my road closure as far as to where the antique store is on this side of her business, to the stop sign, where--
Do you think it needs to go to the top--
Yeah, only because the, when the chief brings out the fire truck, he usually parks his engine in front of that tree.
Yeah.
He doesn't park on the backside. And since we're having the haunted house, that engine would probably be too big to be there, plus with the haunted house being there.
Yeah.
I think it'd be safer for them to park their engine on that side of the tree like they did last year.
And so--
So it's a partial--
Back to the one we're talking about, the Gold Fest, that is certainly with the Jeep Club is sponsoring that, so it sets a lot of vehicles, so it will be, I think, a full road closure, isn't it? Not lengthwise, but across.
Oh, width, no, width, like, from the railroad track--
Right.
--to the storefront, to me, is okay to close.
Okay.
But I'm talking lengthwise, because in front of, in front of Big Easy, if they're open in front of your store, I don't think it should be blocked off, closed off. But that's, that's your, that's your call.
We're talking three hours.
I know.
I think it's, you know, people--
But mostly, we'll have to park on the other side of Kingsbury Street.
Uh-huh.
Okay. I mean, to walk over.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, do we, I don't, this is, is this a vote required? It's been--
Do we say yes to Halloween? Yes, we say yes to Halloween.
Yes, to the haunted houses.
Just in case, yeah.
Yes!
Yeah, so--
When we approve that permit.
All right. So there's been a motion to approve the permit, and I think you just seconded it there.
I seconded it.
Because my, my event is separate from the 26th.
Right. Yours is--
No, I've been going around town telling all the kids, yeah, in Kingsbury, we have Halloween on Halloween, and we also have another Halloween, just because, you know, you can't have you and Halloween.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, that motion carries. All right, so special event application for road closure for trunk or treat kids Candy Fest, October 31st, and that is Wanda. And this one is five to eight, and again, three hours. Combo holiday event held in parking lot, open spaces with a haunted house, offering families fun and spooky Halloween experience. I love that. So expecting around 100, so traffic control is road parking spots and street closure. So, yeah, and with, typically, the, the engine will, is kind of a barricade-- In itself. --will provide barricades, but it is kind of a road closure. So this is October 31st, five to eight, on Railway Street. So this, so what are we talking about? Lengthwise, you were thinking from the stop sign to basically--
Antique store.
To up to the antique store.
Just before Big Easy.
Yeah.
We're not going to block or-- Yeah, because I told her I wouldn't block her--
So from Kingsbury Road--
--because that's their karaoke night, and I don't want to interfere them. But then she did say that we were willing to tell everybody at our event that their food truck will be available if anybody--
That's actually--
So Kingsbury Road to--
Advertising for that, I'm pretty cool.
To, I'm trying to think of good, it's to the end of 668 Railway. 668 Railway is the one where it's the, with the little alleyway between the buildings. So--
So not in front of the store? I'm going to do that.
No, I think she's talking from, from Kingsbury Road.
Oh, you're talking alleyway between--
Yeah, I'm talking about that little pedestrian alleyway between buildings, between the antique store.
Okay, I don't, whatever.
So are you, are you--
You understand.
I wanted to know where the antique store-- Where the antique store actually is, like where Big Easy has their--
Okay, so from--
Outdoor yard.
Big Easy, okay.
Yeah.
To Big Easy, okay.
I mean, exactly where the antique store stops.
Johnny Harvest Old Store.
Yeah. Now, how they want to move, that's closed in, where the food truck is or something.
Oh, yeah, no, no, this side, you know, next to, like, the old store, there's that little block.
Yeah, I wanted a little bit further out.
Okay, got it, got it.
Because we're looking at approximately 20 trunks, hopefully, plus I'm going to have some of my trucks out there as well, so that's going to be extra parking, so it's awesome.
All right.
Oh, a costume!
We are having a costume contest.
All right.
We are having a trunk contest for--
Sheesh, pressure's on.
Which prizes, get winners.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the trunk or treat kids Candy Fest on October 31st.
Seconding the motion.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, motion carries. Item number 10, discuss and consider, oh, uh--
Can I go back one?
Yep. Item number nine, discussing special event application for road closure for Fall Harvest Festival, November 9th.
Yes! I'll vote to approve that.
She didn't turn in the application? Done? Move on.
We printed out some applications, see?
You didn't turn in that?
I did.
I didn't know I had to.
They have the files.
It's a city festival.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll, I think we'll retroactively go and just--
Or should I run and get one, or?
No, 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 no. Well, we'll retroactively, we'll just cover all the information, and it's just, it's for information for, like, you know, who's doing it, event name, description of the event, date, date time.
Yes, it is from noon to six, and we always shut the road from the stop sign all the way down past the field. And we've talked to marshals.
Yes.
They are happy, because they always make lots of money. Yeah, sorry, Big Easy.
So that's, that's from Kingsbury Road to 4C.
Yeah. And sorry, I just figured it was, I don't know why, I thought it was because it's a city festival.
Yeah, yeah. Um, um, okay. Yeah, as always, most of us put on here, like emergency medical plan is 911, security plans, Guadalupe County Sheriff, we can have them on board.
And the sheriff's office will be there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I have the fire department.
You promised to fill out an application. I'll move it, we accept.
All right.
Grant the permit.
All right. Do you want to second that? I guess, I guess--
I'll second it.
All right. Motion has been made.
As a commissioner, I'll second it.
Yeah, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, that motion carries. Now, item number 10, discuss and consider Kingsbury Development Committee report. Wait until we get this.
Good evening, everybody, for the Kingsbury Development Committee report. Been working, worked on the strategic planning proposal, following that it was rejected by the workshop, but that was the end result, so that's been nixed. However, the city commissioners will be looking into creating a vision and a mission, and so we're looking forward to seeing that. In the meantime, November 12th, we have special guest Kingsbury Baptist Church coming, Pastor Cassell, Cas, Cas, Castle?
Castle.
Castle Senior, and his team will be coming to talk about the church, their mission, the food pantry that they have, and also the clothing donations, and if you have some clothes you want to come with, bring those with you the day of and things like that. He will be the guest speaker, presenter. December 10th, we'll have the Guadalupe County Master Gardeners here to do a presentation about gardening basics, 101. I'm currently in discussion with National Plant Society, Game Warden, Texas Parks Wildlife, Texas Water Development Board, Texas Department of Ag, and General Land Office about coming and doing some presentations also for this group. And then we'll also have surveys provided at each one for those that are in attendance to provide your input, not only about the presentation you see, but then also what you would like to see on future. All right. That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Elena, thank you for this as well, and I had the opportunity of meeting the school principal of Prairie Lake School, and I told her, I forgot to tell her about, for some reason, that was more important.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 11, discuss and consider strategic planning workshop report, Jessica Gardner.
Well, it was an interesting meeting, and we talked about the, the different, well, I think Allison's draft of the mission and vision, it seemed like we were all kind of liking the direction that was going, and that there was discussion about continuing to develop that, that concept. I think those are the main things. I don't know, what do you--
Yeah, I think we, we talked about it a lot, but, yeah, there was--
As you guys can imagine, we discussed the concept of Liberty City quite a bit, and what it is and what it's not, and tried to figure it out, and how we come up with a strategic plan within that. Yeah, it's, it's a lot to think about and a lot to, to, you know, we don't want to end up like a HMO with rules.
HOA.
HOA, HMO, HOA, I mean, and how do we, how do we stay true to our values and what the people of Kingsbury have asked us to do, which was originally to get us out of Saguin ZTJ. That is our purpose. So now what is our purpose? But, yeah, I guess--
So now we're a city, and we're trying to figure out, what are we doing?
Yeah.
Why, why are we doing it?
Why are we doing it?
And what, what does everybody out here want to see? If they want to see anything change, or improved, or different, or done, that's like, that's why we're looking for a mission. We're looking for a vision on how to accomplish our mission, and we're supposed to be putting stuff on that message board and flinging it around and getting ideas going, and it's a slow start. It's very slow. So if you participate in the message board or if you read it, that last one, you can type anything you want to, everybody's going to see it.
The general.
Yeah, the general. You don't have to put your real name on anything, if you don't want to.
Use my name.
I use my name just when I'm commenting, I want to know it's me. But, yeah, but if you, if you, if you look at that now and then, if you see something show up, feel free to comment on it. I mean, it's like we're in the living room, coffee and cigarette and a beer, and talk about what's happening and what we're trying to do. If we have an opportunity. If we have an opportunity.
And how we provide for our community without infringing on anybody's freedoms, so that's been the struggle, like, you know, what do we provide, how do we provide it? I think, you know, thinking about the roadways in downtown, downtown is actually easier to think about cuz it's, everybody's tighter in there. Um, you know, how do we get water way out?
Just don't bring a whole lot of rules in it, we'd be in a whole lot of cars.
Exactly. Nobody, nobody wants rules, none of us want rules.
We all, we all wanna live here, we all wanna be comfortable with each other.
Exactly.
And, and everybody's different and everybody has a little bit different need, and we want you to be able to fulfill your need without asking me to pay for it and without infringing on me fulfilling my needs. And I try to keep it separate from everybody, it's me and you or you. And some of the stuff you do, I like, and some of the stuff you do, we're not gonna talk about.
Excuse me, you know, the roads, it's not just, I mean, you have the congestion downtown to save the children and being more people, but the roads are bad everywhere. My road, you're going up and down because they'll come out and they'll shove a little asphalt in it, but it's not there anymore. It doesn't last, there's, there's bumps where, you know, you're going around, if you can go down Kingsbury Road, and you can see the yellow lines, and you can have people pass the people in the hills, and you know, a lot of things, but the roads are bad and some, you know, being county roads, I'm also hearing some people have the state roads behind them that haven't been cleared. Okay, where, so I don't know where that division is, you know, where it goes from state to county.
Ninety A is, ninety is, ninety is a state road.
I mean, it's, it's a big concern for people, I mean, you know, we have a buffalo out that has been seen for days.
We still have a down buffalo.
I, I just love, I, only in Kingsbury can you like go to the bar to meet somebody and see a flyer and be like, there's a buffalo on the list, and then you look at who owns the buffalo, you're like, those are my friends, yeah.
No. But the road, it's all the roads, I mean, definitely do not kill children, but you never know what you're gonna run into on these roads.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And they all need help.
Yeah, if, if there's an issue on, like what you're talking about, like Wilkie Road, I mean, that's city commission, I mean, not city commission, that's county, that's the county is responsible for that, and so that's a, that's a call to, I mean, if you wanna call, let me know, I'll call them.
That's right, you know, just is that like a reoccurring, like every, every week we spit out here our road, our road.
They pay the county, that's what, that's what the county taxes go for, is, is roads.
I mean, that, yeah, we can't do anything about your road, we can do downtown Kingsbury Roads.
We'd be glad to see somebody to the county commission meeting with a list of everybody that sent us a letter, said, this is what's wrong with their road here, this is wrong, and I said, we're not just a city that's not part of the county, we, we're people that live out here and this is y'all's job, and we pay the taxes, we pay the same taxes for our road maintenance, whether we're in the city or not. And the county needs to, yeah.
It needs to maintain.
They need to do a little bit more.
Excuse me, was, uh, that the tax base is going up for the county.
The county, but not for us, yeah.
Right, but for the county, the superintendent, road formans, et cetera, not to be addressing the issues is not acceptable. And these are folks that are getting paid and that are making a salary, and then some of them, the supervisors that are being elected officials. So you go to the meetings and you get the letters and you tell these folks that you're just not doing a good job, and they should take heed to the warning that they are elected official.
And is that something you put out your papers to go to the message board, or how we, how do we wanna, how do we wanna approach it, what do we, what do we say?
If you're, if you're just trying to get ahold of the county commissioners, you can call them up, it's mostly right here, it's mostly precinct one.
But I wonder if like we could send a whole pack of the letters to them too, I mean, bombard them.
Typically call them up and they.
Everybody, everybody lives out here and receives a message board on that homepage, wants to put, I live, all right, on Highway ninety again, or Slough, uh, west on the Kingsbury side, not the Loop side, the pothole that you filled is empty again, the pothole you filled, and I can, and if they write that down once a week or once a day or every hour, I'll record it and we'll take a list, a catalog of everything we've got from out here, and I'll go to the commission meeting and I'll tell them, this is what we need.
Absolutely.
Are you a city commissioner? No, I live in Guadalupe County too.
So we can send, so residents can send their, their, their things to you and you will make the, you'll pitch, you'll pitch to the county commissioners.
I'll be the commission.
You'd be like Santa Claus and come in with the big pile of flowers.
I'd love, I'd love to roll out a hundred feet of paper with sing things on it.
County commissioner, it's not a regularly scheduled, but it's typically on a Tuesday, they have it posted on their website, it's kind of every, it's two Tuesdays a month, but it's not exactly.
Typically starts at ten AM.
Yeah, it starts at ten AM.
We tried talking about signs, we met with the, I met with the road foreman or superintendent about a sign to get people to slow down because of the hill on Pooley Road, and they wouldn't do it, but they know me.
You can go with Frank.
Don't you make friends.
Be glad to go with you.
What hill on Pooley Road, I'm curious now.
It's just a, it's not that bad, but it's between us and where they opened that metal business there.
Yeah.
And they'll park, they'll park in the road early in the mornings, there'll be a steel truck sitting in the road, and, you know, it's, you leave at night at five, five thirty in the morning, the road's blocked, and we shouldn't have to go the other way because they can block the roads.
Yeah, absolutely not, yeah.
Or go inside, yeah.
What is the message board? We have no clue.
On the Kingsbury, kingsbryetexas.org or kingsburytexas.com.
So go to the city website.
There's a message board and it takes you to something called pro boards, and it's just a way to, you can post anonymously, you can make a sign in, and you can, it's a way to discuss, because being a, a city in Texas, there's very strict laws about communication. We can't talk to each other.
Unless it's in front of you guys.
Unless it's in front, unless it's in the public. I can't call up Allison and say, hey, what, don't you think this would be a great idea? We can't, unless the public is there listening, because of something happened in Sharpstown in the nineteen seventies. And so on the message, it is actually, yeah, there were people arrested because they were talking in the men's room. And, cuz the public wasn't allowed in the men's room. Yeah. It wasn't posted three days in advance and the public wasn't allowed in, that, you know. We're not into a lot of shenanigans, but there have been cities that have, so in order to make sure that everything's transparent, but we can communicate on the message board because anybody can see it. So I could, then I could say to Allison, hey, wouldn't this be a great idea? Because anybody can see it.
So what address is kingsbury, kingsbury texas dot O R G?
Okay.
Or dot com, we'll take it in the same place.
If you just do Kingsbury Texas, a bunch of, you'll see.
Yeah, you'll see it.
Well, and you'll see one of the labels across the top says message board.
We can only use, everybody can read any of them, but we can only type on one, and the second one is the development committee's board, and I think that's open to the public.
That's open to everybody.
Yeah, and then there's the home one or the.
Yeah, on the city commission one, only we can post on it, but everybody can see it.
Yeah, but the home one, yeah.
Yeah, it's pre-prob, we had some Russian hacker like post a bunch of stuff, so, yeah, we have to. Take, it was all in Russian, so we had to take that off, but other than that, you know, it's.
If you want, and even there's, on that same website, all our email addresses, including our, are on there, underneath our little pictures that we had when we were much younger and better looking.
I'm only getting better looking.
That's right.
I do have a question, who is the one that takes care of the road right here on Gravel Pit and ninety, like right before you come over the road tracks? Cuz those potholes there.
Oh, yeah, that's not in the city.
This county.
That would probably be the railroad, actually.
Yeah, they have a.
That would be U P.
Does that, right, you know, when you turn off at ninety to go onto Gravel Pit, those holes, I would come in there, put a little bit of.
That might be either, I can contact them, that could be either U P or Tech Stop, cuz that on ninety, that's Tech Stop maintains that, if it's on the railroad easement, which is pretty wide, that would be U P. Now, U P may or may not, you know, they're U P and we're not U P, yeah, so, but I can contact, so.
I know, those potholes right there are just really.
You know, that's one that I don't go over that often, but, uh, so I haven't linked, but I'll, I'll.
They did find the fill them.
Oh, they did fill them?
Yeah, they fill them and then, like a month or two, they.
Right, no, but.
Then if we get rain, just.
I bet.
They didn't get filled for two months, three months, but they finally did just a week ago.
Yeah, I, I can contact Will and, okay.
Cuz they were serious.
Gravel Pit, okay. Uh, yeah, uh, our, our number one.
Sorry, what Joanna was talking about, that was two issues actually. Uh, animal, hey, recently we had a sheep out in the road and no big figure out where they went, so they went into one neighbor's property and they called the sheriff's department. Animal control doesn't work on weekends.
They walk right on down four C and onto Summit, on back.
And out to Kingsbury Road and got put in by us property until when the owner came by Monday morning, and he comes up to that intersection, comes down Prairie Lake, where are my sheep doing over there? I was taking him to Simon, I didn't say that name.
Is, uh, so you said there was two, two issues, you said?
Well, because one was the road itself and the issue, the other was animal control, both under the county sheriff's department, but it's two separate parts of the sheriff's department.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah.
I'm sorry, Joanna, but that's why I had.
Actually, the buffalo is considered exotic, so keeping the catboys.
Yeah, there was an axis deer out, uh, night before last, and I, I pretty much knew who it belonged to, and I called, and they said, yeah, he's been out for a few weeks, but he's super tame, and he was, he was just like walking right. I was like, man, I could jump out and pet him.
He died, right?
And he called me the next day and said, called me the next day and said his, his uncle was near there, and he went out there and sure enough, he was right there, he opened the gate and went right in. But, yeah, axis deer on the road too, you never know, you never know what's gonna be. Yeah, the buffalo got out, like, what, six or, six or eight of them got out.
He's still missing, because I'm like, I'm going up behind at my fence, there's no damage to it, he's like, oh, he's got it cleared, no problem, I said, well, I wanna see it, you know, I mean, he could be in my woods.
There was a whole herd of them hung out, got loose and hung out in the field right there by the church.
Well, yeah, I mean, but I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna go out in my woods with a twenty-two little, you know, like, she says he's, you know, nice, and then the guy's like, oh, he'll see someone.
Flower in his hair.
It's like, I don't know if he's in the woods, my dog barks, you know?
Uh.
He knows, they haven't found him yet.
Yeah, no, I, I, it's amazing that we don't know exactly where he went.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't think anybody's, you know, buffalo does taste good, but nobody's, nobody's gonna duck anything to all, but.
See, round the Kingsbury, he'll, he'll pop up.
Yeah.
Tony Lama popped up over there, and I think you inherited a few peacocks, I think animals just kinda get swamped around Kingsbury.
Ah, the moon and storms, they're all over the place.
Do we have anything further on the strategic planning workshop report there? Kind of got that covered? Yeah, it was, I mean, we still have certainly work to do, we have, and, you know, community input is always available on the message board. All right, item number twelve, discuss and consider parading a chamber of commerce, Allison Tannenbaum.
Well, I know this has been a long meeting so far, so we don't have to get too far into this, but I was just thinking, you know, as far as the business, I, I have a business and it's, I would love to commiserate with other business owners, and that's the way you develop an economy, like you were saying, in Kingsbury, and it would also kind of fit our libertarian values of a liberty city, to have something completely separate from the city, and you wouldn't have to be incorporated to be in it, so it might be something to consider doing. And that's all I got, I'm thinking about it.
You're thinking about ending up with.
Is anybody interested in forming a chamber of commerce in Kingsbury?
That gentleman raised his eyebrows and he's thinking.
Advertise local businesses, like my husband.
That's what it would be, I would be.
Whatever transport company as well.
See, that chamber of commerce, you would be on it.
Sure.
It would be like, whatever business owners are in the area can get together, and it's a private, as far as I know, chamber of commercees are completely separated from the government, they're privately run. Seguin has one, I was thinking of going to a meeting just to see, I mean, Kyle Cram, and I've met him, he seems really nice and knowledgeable, but it's, it's really just for businesses to support each other.
There's a lot of businesses.
And to help the city.
Privately owned businesses in this area that I have no idea that they were there, and, and it doesn't hurt to just get the word out, it does not.
Yeah.
Uh, making connections, I mean.
I think there would be a lot of interest in it.
You could be packing up USMPs and he could be providing the truck.
Exactly.
They're probably more interested in any product.
Actually, do you have trucking? Cuz I do need trucking desperately.
We do have trucks and trucks.
All right, we gotta talk.
So it's just a matter.
And add on the message board.
See, we created a chamber of commerce right here.
I think there's definitely the interest there to take it to the next step and see, you know, what all we need to do to get it, you know, formed, formed right and get it, you know.
Get it going, I think I might visit Seguin and Luling's and just talk to them and see what they do and how they do it and, you know.
If he wants to go, we all go to Luling and stuff, oh, like, they're, they're just real nice businesses out there, everybody's, you know, that'd be a pleasure.
Awesome, okay.
Give you folks the information, we'd be glad to attend.
Sounds good, I will, I will figure out dates with those guys and we'll get a field trip together. Yay.
Who's got the tuss?
You do, right?
No, I do, I don't have any, sorry.
All right, item number thirteen, discuss and consider interlocal agreement on subdivision regulation. So in comparing our subdiv, our interlocal with the county and then the one Staples interlocal with the county, the only, it, it's, a lot of it is word for word, or at least section by section, you know, very similar, what is, what, because Staples, Staples has set it up where they do their own plating, so there's a section, there, there's your, your overall, uh, uh, the term, the term of the agreement, uh, the county responsibilities, and then what Staples has that's separate is the city responsibilities. We don't have a city responsibilities in our interlocal with, with the county. So it would be essentially adding the city responsibilities to our interlocal with the county. So, uh, other than that, they are extraordinarily similar. Uh, it's, they're, you know, essentially, you know.
And what is the subdivision regulation? That you're looking to implement in Lyman's terms?
That the, within the city limits, the city of Kingsbury would be in control of plating.
In control of plating.
Currently, the county is, we have an agreement.
Nothing, essentially.
Okay. Uh, so. Or subdivide, or if somebody is subdividing property?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it could be with subdivision rules, this is their terms of agreement.
Is Ethan for sale within the city limits of any significance, acreage wise at this time?
That's ours.
Within the city limits, I have not, I have not seen.
Not in the city limits, there's a couple of ten acre plots I know about.
ETJ area.
Oh, I get that asked all the time.
But it's, sometimes it's not even. Or the mouth and it's gone, you know.
Yeah.
City limits, city limits there, the only one that I know of is right down the road from me, and that's, uh, the property, the, the little similar, the property is for sale.
How many acres is that?
I think it's a ten and a fifty.
Sixty-six.
That's when you have to, when, when I think you have to talk about as to what you want or don't want, is to, right now, you see these small farms or small ranches, however you wanna describe that definition, is to, the developers are going in and offering second, third generation because of taxes they're paying, et cetera, a price for this sixty-six acres, and next thing you know, they're proposing a subdivision, uh, that could very well have a huge impact on Kingsbury and the city itself.
Yep.
Not only for utilities and services and what you can provide, water, fire department needs, you know, you build fifteen hundred houses, if it was approved for a fire department like this, things start changing very rapidly.
That's a concern. That's, that's our concern.
That's our main fear.
And you wouldn't want, when I, I hear you talk, and I'm more observant too, it's kind of interesting for me, but is living down the road. But I think you wouldn't want to not entertain, but be cautious as to how you do it, and what you're gonna prove.
Yeah, that's where we get into where we've had a lot of discussion about, about zoning. Because, you know, maybe they don't want to put a subdivision in, maybe they want to put a, uh, like, you know, where they're building concrete pipes. And so you living next door, you're breathing in, uh, uh, dust and your house is full of dust and you've got trucks and traffic and noise all day, every day.
True.
Well, but if you come to this, and we say, oh, well, it's not zoned for that, zoned for residential. But if you come to the city commission and you say, you know, we don't, well, dust is good for you. We don't mind, we don't mind anything. We could, we would say, all right, well, you know, approved to, you know, do that. So what we're trying to do is like have some of that, 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 uh, protection against, yeah, a, a selling out, to an undesirable type, and, and have some kind of control over what's happening.
Because as of right now, that property's probably listed, no restrictions.
No, yes.
And if somebody could drop a well, you know, for somebody like me dropping a thirty-six thousand dollar well is one thing. But for a developer to spend a million dollars to drop a well for fifteen hundred houses, there's no restrictions. And you'd probably be hard pressed to stop it.
Yeah.
So, you, you know, I think it's a much bigger picture when you talked about the planning aspect of it, zoning aspect of it. And becoming, you know, a scene now that you're progressing, moving forward, that even after we're not here.
Right.
Twenty, thirty years from now, what are you leaving somebody? And are they just as happy living in Kingsbury as the folks are today? And the issue that we have around here is that we all feel, and the way things have always been, is we, I, you don't bother me on what, how I use my property. And it's, and everybody here is residential agricultural business. There are some businesses, but, but we've always had the attitude that, uh, I, I won't. You don't tell me what to do with my property, I won't ever tell you what to do. But what I have come to realize is that the problem is not with what my neighbor is doing. It's the guy that he's gonna sell his property to. That's what then all of a sudden, I do think, uh, we should have some control over what that is. And then if he wants to put up a battery plant right next to my house, uh, that's, uh, then we would have, if there was zoning. We could say, yes, my neighbor can sell his property to Elon Musk, who will come in to build a battery plant. And, but then, uh, Elon has to come to us and say, I want to change the zoning. And I want to use it for industrial use. And we could say, well, you can do that. We want businesses to come in. But for instance, it, if you're gonna have thirty acres covered with battery plant. You should build, you should have to buy a hundred acres and put a green space around it. So that there is a park around it that separates me and my cattle from all of that industry. At least, that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
But we have a lot of, the. I'll give you an example, even though we're in the county, and the supervisor, as of now, and they don't want to do anything about it. But in, in business is good, and I know people have to make money to support their families. But the metal company that went in on Pulley Road, they went in, they bought a small patch of land, no restrictions, just minor covenants. Huge difference between the two on a deed. And now there were people that had moved out of their own home for the reason, on Saturday morning, at four thirty, five o'clock in the morning, they're beating and banging and it's echoing their home. And then on top of that, the road being blocked, and the county don't want to do anything about it. The trucks delivering have destroyed the road in that area for a couple hundred feet. And nobody wants to budge, uh, but eventually you're gonna have those things, just like a battery plant catching on fire. And it burns three houses downstream because they can't put it out. Because the fire department at this point in time, they're not equipped for a battery plant. They don't even know what's inside that.
That's exactly right, so.
And we also have a dog breeder behind us that we can't, because it gives our covenants, but.
Right.
He's back there making thousands of dollars.
It's definitely things to consider and how you impact the county around you, the people in the county as well. Because you hope that they come and support things for your events in town and your, you know, even somebody said about the, the food trailer. You know, it was a good place to get a hamburger, so, you know, and they stay if people purchase, so.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, definitely agreed. So what we're talking about here is just adding, uh, instead of allowing the county to handle the plating within our city limits, where we would handle the plating within our city limits. And so I don't have anything ready today, but that's essentially what it would take is this, uh, city responsibility. It's, it's basically we're taking, uh.
We're designated what we want.
What kind of, what kind of certification, review and approval process are with the city Kingsbury?
It's a change to the interlocal agreement with the county.
So it'd be fundamentally the same as with the county?
Yeah.
Particularly with further restrictions from the state.
We, we would choose things that we would regulate and not leave to them.
Right.
So, yeah, I think we should definitely keep all of these, uh, these community, uh.
Yeah, so I'll have something ready for next, uh, and I'll, well, I'll get something ready and I'll put it on the message board and we can review it and, and get, get input and, uh. So it's just a way for us to, to be, uh, instead of letting the county handle what's in our city limits.
So you said you're gonna put something on the message board for the community to take a look at? Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, great.
Mayor, when we, uh, when we address that, uh, amending that agreement, uh, it occurs to me, we, we should know what county's rules are right now. And I think the county sat down, briefed us when we did it, but recently I've gone back to look and I, I don't find it on their website. And it says they have all of their ordinances and everything. But it's maybe my research is just poor, but is, do they have it?
It is here. It's a PDF document. I have downloaded it. I can upload it onto the message board and email it to everybody live.
Which, and which document is that?
Uh, I, I'm just talking about the, uh, their actual reg, subdivision regulations.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, well.
Because I think they've changed since we equipped them.
I don't know if it needs to be, well, if, if everybody wants to know and they, and they should chime in, that's fine. But I would certainly appreciate.
I can email it to you.
If you can email me.
Sure, it's a PDF file.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And, and cities have gone back and forth, you know, uh, it's one of the, one of the options, you know, it has to do with flood control, uh, plating and subject. So, uh, we've opted to let the county handle all that. We're just talking about the, the plating being in, within the city limits. Us taking over the plating within the city limits, so.
Oh, within the city limits and the Seguin E T J?
I think we can.
No, we, no, not the Seguin E T J.
Okay, because I.
No, no, our.
On the agenda, it says the E T J.
Kingsbury E T J.
How would we take over Seguin's E T J?
No, I said it's all for the city and the, and this, and Kingsbury E T J, that's what I was asking.
It is, it is not, uh, it is only like city limits.
I, I know it is, but I think we can, man, I'll find it and I'll.
I would do this problem with.
Put it on the message board or give you the information.
Okay.
But I think that, I know I saw something about the E T J in some cases.
Yeah, in some cases, the, the.
Thing has to do with county size, population and.
Right, the onsite sewage order, the onsite sewage is city limits and E T J. The, the, uh, flood control is city limits and E T J. And right now, our plating is the county handles, city limits and E T J.
So we should probably take back.
I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna, I don't know, I'm gonna see what I, I'll, I'll see what I can find.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but that's a good, that's a good point is, yeah, whether it's, whether it includes E T J.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Agnastic.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you want to take a look at Texas Local Government Code, chapters two thirty-two and chapters two forty-two. Those have to do with county regulations of subdivisions.
Uh, I think I have in my stack here. I just have, well, I got, I got like a page or two.
There's also Texas Transportation Codes regarding the, relating to roads and bridges, per the development. So that's chapter, Texas Transportation Code, chapter two fifty-one. Um, and regarding the subdivision plant, plat and penalty, you want to look at Texas Property Code, section twelve point zero two.
What was that last one, the title?
Texas Property Code, section twelve point zero two, specificized subdivision plat and penalty.
Okay.
And then the Texas Water Code, section sixteen point three one five.
Too much, Lena, you're overloading me.
I know.
Sorry.
But it has to do with compliance of federal requirements, FEMA and T C E Q, Guadalupe County Flood, et cetera, regulations that may be impacted.
Great. Uh, item number fourteen, at this point, we'll reassess our regular commission meeting and we'll go into executive session. This is where we, where public is, uh, not part of this, and then we'll come back, but.
Thank you guys so much. This has been an amazing meeting. Thank you for staying so long.
Thank you.
Ah, we appreciate yours.
Stacy and Nicole.
Stacy and Nicole.
Yeah, how are they?
Welcome back.
So, item number sixteen, at this point, we'll reconvene our regular commission meeting. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider possible real estate acquisition. This is Frank Agnastic.
You took it up, we're supposed to read away.
Yeah.
Yes, the resolution.
Sam.
Resolution.
Rosalyn.
Oh. We need a resolution, uh, a second, a motion for the resolution? I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't listening to you.
You're supposed to say this part.
Well, first the resolution and then make a motion and to approve it.
Okay, yeah.
Right, okay, uh.
After discussion, I'll.
Uh, maybe, maybe Sam could read it faster.
Yes. It's, I, I thought so.
I love your writing.
It is, oh, that is writing.
Well, first of all, Dennis, speaking on behalf of the commission, the commission has looked at your opportunity and your offer and to acquire the property, a point four nine acre tract, uh, and to have home at seventy-five, seventy-one Kingsbury Road from Dennis Keim. And, uh, they plan to do that for a thirty-four thousand dollar purchase price, uh, to be, uh, developed as a city hall, community center. And, uh, so the, the city commission has instructed me to reduce that offer to a contract to be signed by you and the mayor. And, uh, and we will then take that contract to, and I'm in the throes of finalizing that contract right now. And then we're gonna take it to Five Star Title downtown, and, uh, they will set up to close. They will, they will run title on the property to see if they're gonna insure it. And they're going to, uh, then, uh, send us a title commitment, and then it'll take them ten days or fourteen days to, uh, that says they'll insure the title. And if there's any exceptions from coverage, uh, they will point out any defects in title or, uh, uh, exceptions that they want to make. And we then have seven days to object to that, and, and we're gonna be objecting to you saying, you, you fix these impediments to title. I don't anticipate any at this point, uh, but that's the process. And once, if we do not object to title defects or to the coverage and the policy, then the title company will proceed to set it up for closing. And the way I've written up the contract is to be closed on or before December one. So that, because it usually takes title companies about three weeks to get it in their mill and run their title and do all of that. And then their, their attorney's gonna write off and pass on it and say, yes, looks like we could take this risk. So, uh, the, i- if I may, Mayor, the, uh, or do I hear a motion?
Yes.
To resolve and, uh, to resolve that whereas the city of Kingsbury has an opportunity to acquire a property, a point four nine acre tract, and a home at seventy-five, seventy-one Kingsbury Road from Dennis Keim for thirty-four thousand dollar purchase price, to be developed as a city hall and community center, whereas the city commission finds that the offer is reasonable and serves the best interest of the community, it is therefore resolved by the city that the mayor is authorized to sign a contract to purchase the property with Dennis Keim on the terms that we've stated and as prepared by the city attorney. Do I hear a motion to pass that?
I would like to make a motion to pass that resolution.
Second that motion.
And I discuss that motion as a citizen, not as the seller. To me, because of my, uh, you're removing property from tax rules, it's not very much, but it does disturb me anytime. People as individuals, and you can say that I'm doing that, trying to avoid taxation. Like I say, as a citizen, I say nothing because this is, hey, you're gonna cut my.
Well, anytime you sell property, you're avoiding further taxation.
Right.
That other person is now responsible for.
But as a citizen, to consider that, and I also know of, that you did not have an offer to purchase property, but the other property that was mentioned in previous meetings that you wouldn't hold title to. Both issues caused me to think, and I just, I speak my mind for the public, even though it confuses some people, other people.
Well, I'd like to say on behalf of myself and.
Everyone.
I feel that my, my fellow commissioners and mayor and everyone here, we're incredibly grateful for this offer and we consider it. We're just so grateful that you believe in us and our vision and what we're trying to do here and, uh, yeah, we'll make you proud, Dennis, I promise.
Just not my name on it. Oh, it's in the signatures.
Carve your graffiti into the wall before.
No, 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 no. Oh, I already did.
And this one, uh, well, we've already passed the resolution.
No, we have not.
Oh, no.
Then I don't need it.
Uh, yeah, was any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I had.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, motion carries.
And it's a historic, Dan, case for you.
Yes, yes.
Yay.
Meeting over.
Finally, at ten o'clock. What time is it?
Nine fifty-two.
All right, bye y'all. Thanks for watching.